On the air, so good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015. I am going to call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Mueller.
Here.
Councilmember Durham.
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker.
Here.
Mayor Denberg.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Hall is absent.
Thank you, and we hope he has a speedy recovery from his illness. I invite our CalFire Battalion Chief Steve Hox to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Please stand, face the flag, ready to begin.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. Our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are going to go through a little bit of procedural gymnastics here, but we are going to recess from our regular meeting and convene our Yountville Housing Authority Special Meeting. So I'm going to call that special meeting to order, and I believe we have a roll call for authority members with the Vice Chair absent due to illness.
Yes.
Correct, all right. We're going to move right ahead to adopting of the agenda for the Housing Authority.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're going to, we've got some extra support there. Approval of the minutes from the January 20, 2015 meeting. Any changes or?
So moved.
And I was not present, so I won't be.
Second.
Okay, so motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One abstention from Councilmember, or Housing Authority Member Durham.
That's right.
And Vice Chair Hall is absent. Public comment on items related to the Housing Authority? I'm assuming we have none right now, so I'm going to move right ahead to our consent calendar item, item 7A. Is there action, or is there a staff report to be had that we need for this item? I know it's on consent, so if the council is prepared to just take action, let's do that.
All move, we approve the consent calendar.
Aye, a second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll save that staff report. It was a good read, though.
It was a good one.
It was a good read.
I really liked it.
And really looking forward to having that program launch and really get some local participation, so that's great. That is the business for the Yountville Housing Authority tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we will reconvene our regular meeting of the Town Council and go to the adoption of our regular, and thank you again for being here just in case with the Housing Authority item.
So I'm able to join.
Okay, yeah, but we're not going to do electronic.
Okay.
So adoption of tonight's regular meeting agenda.
I move we adopt the agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Public comment on anything that we're not speaking about tonight on the regular council agenda. Seeing nobody move forward, oh, Jerry, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I'll make two announcements. This Saturday afternoon at four o'clock, I'm heading Miller Collar with Dr. Miller. His announcement has come out before the whole contingent of the library, all meeting members and fellow workers of the O.R. Allen and Free Mission, Charlotte, New Southland, Sacred Bethless at four o'clock, and Marty Navy from six to noon, the Allen and the April Christian Avenue Junior School, the Fall Festival at Division Pine Street in April. Those are the two main courses of the, of the, of the agenda.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing no one else come forward, we'll go ahead and move right on to this consent calendar. We have three items for consideration. Is there a motion or any discussion on any of these items? Don't all speak at once here.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that. We have no presentations, so we're going to move on to our one public hearing, considering adoption, approving a master development plan amendment for Hotel Yountville. Let's start with the staff report, please.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you a master development plan for the Hotel Yountville project, and you know, this project has a history that dates back to 2006 when the original approval was granted for the 32-room expansion of the hotel, and associated with that was a 25-unit affordable housing project across Champagne Drive. And since the original approval, there have been several amendments, some of which related to bringing this property into a top-tier luxury property. At first, they wanted to, the First Amendment related to the addition of a spa. That displaced some meeting room space and some administrative offices, so we saw requests to use the farmhouse on the affordable housing project. Some uses were granted, and most recently, the applicant's request to use a fitness center for the hotel guests was denied, but the council gave positive feedback that they would consider a small fitness room addition to the hotel property, and that's what's before you tonight. It's a small 400-square-foot addition that would be located between buildings E and F, and those are the building blocks that are adjacent to Hopper Creek and the path. They would be set back 35 feet from center line of Creek, and the design of the fitness center will be a stone-clad building similar to what we see out there at Hotel Yountville. It'll have a rounded front elevation that mirrors the rock wall formation at the pool deck, and the building on the backside will feature eight-foot-tall glass walls with doors, and it's a 13-foot building, so it's predominantly glass on the back. The idea is to create a nice place for guests to work out with a view of the creek. Let's see, there will be some landscape changes to the project. They're all considered minor. There are two existing olive trees that will be moved to the front of the building and provide some softening of all the stone in that location. That describes the design. When it comes to the use, the room will contain four pieces of equipment that are lined up against that rear wall. It'll also have typical amenities like mirrors and towel racks and stretching mats and a water cooler. It will have a flat-screen TV and a sound system, and the equipment pieces themselves, many of them will have electronics built into them, so you can have a screen while you're doing a cycling program. The room will only be open to guests, and the proposed hours of operation are from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and guest entry will be gained from their swipe card that will be programmed for those hours. The room will be managed by hotel staff, maintained by housekeeping, and patrolled by hotel security, which is available 24 hours. So I've analyzed the project in terms of design review for the development standards, and this is a planned development project, and planned developments are different from normal zoning districts in that many of the development standards can, they're variable, and they can be designed based on the specific project. FAR is one item that can be moved upward of what the normal standard is. The project is also subject to master development plan, and as you know, that also builds that flexibility into the process. So the project is consistent with the zoning and design standards. FAR is one item we should talk about, since commercial FAR is generally limited to 25 percent, and that's for the commercial part of a project. Each of the commercial zoning districts in town also allow a 15 percent bonus for office or residential uses on-site. We don't see that here, but we do have an existing FAR of 27 and 1/2 percent, so that is slightly over the 25 percent, and this small addition will increase that to 27.9 percent. And the way we've evaluated this is that there were considerations that justified the higher FAR in the first place. That was the provision of the affordable housing, the amount of open space that was provided, and that this is really a minor increase for an amenity that the hotel has let us know is necessary for their business. So in terms of actual density, when you look at a project, it will be less than the 40 percent that we generally see on commercial properties. So that's one of the strongest points in regulating FAR, to deal with that massing, and we feel this project is positive in that regard. This is also toward the rear of the property in a landscaped area that really won't be seen from Washington, and the way, the height of the building is lower in relation to the two-story building should mitigate some of that mass. So we are of opinion that it's reasonable in regards to the scale of the project. There is one issue, however, that isn't noted in my staff report, and I only noticed it on the drawings that were submitted after the staff report was completed, and that's the railing that's shown on the back deck. That is shown in the 35-foot setback, and the only items that are permitted in the setback are at-grade patios. So my recommendation is that we include another condition of approval, that there be no railing surrounding that deck, and that would be consistent with the treatment given to the back deck or the back patios on each of the units that face the creek that also have at-grade patios, and they're not surrounded by railing. And so that's my suggestion. That relates to the design review of the project. There is also a use permit associated with the expansion of use to include this accessory structure for the hotel property, and we really, our staff really has no concerns with the project except for potential impacts due to noise, since it will be on, facing residential areas, a gateway. It will have doors that can open and face that area. It will have a TV, a sound system, and the equipment itself. So we have included a condition to mitigate those noise impacts and require that the noise is within, is consistent with the town's noise ordinance. I don't really have an issue because I know that the applicant himself has a strong interest in making sure they don't have noise. They're a luxury property, and they have units that are directly adjacent to it, but this is an additional protective measure for us, and it impresses upon them how important it is that they back up to a residential area. And then I'm also proposing a six-month review so that we can evaluate any impacts, notably this noise issue, and with the authority to bring it back to council for modification if we do identify any noise impacts. So we are recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here to give a presentation.
Great, thank you. Questions of the staff report? Councilmember Mueller?
As part, when we approved the gym in the farmhouse, a strong sentiment of the council was that we get this application for the gym at the hotel as part of that approval. So my question has to do with, when are they really going to be able to get this built? They won't, even if they pull permits, they can't build till March 15th?
They can because mass grading isn't involved. This is a small area. There isn't mass grading, and they could start as soon as they prepare building plans, submit and pull a permit. So they want to build over the slower winter season and have it open by April or sooner.
Okay, so that's their intent, but we don't have any way to encourage it beyond just taking them at their word for that, okay?
Correct.
All right, that's my question, thanks.
I have a couple. One is, how do you keep noise from crossing over the property line? I mean, that's kind of, that's the language we have in here, restrict noise from crossing the property line.
It means that they have to keep the sound levels within that room low. If they have a sound system, it should be low background level noise. It shouldn't be loud pumping workout music that they can't contain within their walls. And so we, if we find that they are using loud music, we can approach them and let them know it's a violation of the permit.
Okay.
But they haven't indicated that that's their goal. They want things sort of spa-like and quiet, so we hope that'll mitigate itself.
But on a hot day, somebody's riding a bike, they open a sliding glass door, and unintentionally might be exposing that noise, so that, but your solution is the six-month review and our occasional monitoring, just to make sure that there isn't a violation?
Yes.
Okay. And I may ask the applicant this question. Why was the railing in the back deck in the first place? Was it just aesthetic?
They want to prevent people walking on the path from entering the gym facility.
And so is there a security concern with removing the railing?
Uh.
That could happen?
That could happen. It leaves it up to them to police it and make sure that the facility is.
So that's something that, I'll ask Mr. Davino just to address. The last thing, I didn't see hours of operation in the resolution. It's in your staff report. I thought we normally had the hours of operation in the actual resolution for the use permit.
We do generally for commercial businesses that are open to the public, but when this is part of an overall, a larger project, and this is an accessory use, I didn't think it was needed, but we can always add it.
I think it's, I'm fine with it being your discretion. I just want to make sure it wasn't accidentally omitted, because I am used to seeing them, but.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. Those are my questions for now, so I'll formally open a public hearing and invite our applicant, Mr. Davino, to come forward and make any comments you might like. And I would like if you would just address the noise mitigation and that railing among your other comments.
Sure, thank you. So what I would say is that, and I think Sandra addressed it well, is, you know, we're trying to be the best luxury hotel we can be, and obviously, an amenity like this is important for this sort of hotel, so that's why we really think this is important to us. And, you know, as it relates to noise levels, I know that was a concern. We don't want noise either, so based on where the exercise room would be located, we would make sure that noise is regulated, and, pardon me, guests would not have access to increasing volume and sound and all this sort of thing. So it's mostly meant for background musics. And as it relates to the railing, it was more for aesthetics. I mean, none of the guest room buildings along the Hopper Creek have railings. We could easily eliminate the railing. It was more for aesthetic reasons.
Okay. Was there anything else that you wanted to address before?
No, I just, you know, would, you know, only comment that we are trying to be as best, you know, the best hotel we can be and represent, you know, the town of Yountville and maximize the use of the property, and that's why we think it's so important.
Okay, thank you. Questions of our applicant? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to this item tonight? Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing and invite council discussion or possible action. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Doran Becker?
Okay, I, I would like to move that we approve Resolution Number 15-3304, approving the master development plan amendment, including design review amendment and use permit amendment for an approximately 400-square-foot guest exercise room at Hotel Yountville located at 6462 Washington Street, APN 036-090-026, and 036-090-038, with the amendment of no railings on the back deck.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you. And just on behalf of the council, we appreciate the actions that you've taken to hear our concerns that we had about the combined use over in the rental area, and appreciate your expedient solution that you found, so thank you for doing that. Yes, Councilmember Durham?
No, I've just got a question. It was stated that the, that the housing gym would be allowed to be open once this came forward.
Correct.
So I just wanted to.
Yeah, and I'm sure staff will follow up with, if there's any kind of paperwork that needs to happen. I don't know that there is, but the farmhouse, the Hopper Creek fitness area is available for the folks that are living in the housing units.
Excellent, good, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move right on to our next item, which is administrative regular item, agenda item 10A regarding wireless telecommunications facilities.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'll present this one. The, as most of you probably already know, and a lot of members of the public and visitors know, cell reception in town is, has spotty locations. It's not always strong. There isn't, as I understand it, any cell towers or facilities currently within town limits, but the town has been approached by a number of companies that would like to site cell towers somewhere in the town. And the town currently doesn't have any ordinance on the books regulating these things, whether they would be on private property or on public property. And under rules that, rules and statutes that have been passed by the federal government, by Congress over the last, I'd say, five or six years, the rules are very complicated for local government entities attempting to regulate wireless telecommunications facilities. So it's really important, this is something that the town manager and I identified fairly early on as something that the town should look to implement in some form. And this is so that you have some control over these facilities if they want to be sited within the town. The federal regulations are pretty limiting, but they do give the town the authority to regulate aesthetics, to regulate, obviously, locations on town property, and to regulate to some degree the structure and, and the actual physical objects of the towers themselves. You can't regulate the RF frequencies except to comply, or to ensure that they comply with federal standards. Sorry, that's the radio frequency emissions, I suppose you could say. And you're limited in terms of how long you can take to review applications and what you can ask of applicants. The ordinance that we are proposing basically gives the town as much control as the town can have, consistent with these federal requirements. And the primary purpose of this was to ensure that the town had the authority to regulate aesthetics and to ensure that these facilities would be camouflaged. What does camouflage mean? It means, to some degree, disguised as something other than a cell tower. So it could be hidden in the eaves of a building. It could be in like a, sometimes they're in church steeples. Where I live in Nevada City, they are frequently poorly disguised as trees. I don't think that.
Going miles an hour.
Yeah, if it's in the middle of the woods, maybe you can get away with that, but often it's very funny, they stick them in a place where there are no other trees, so. But in the proposed ordinance, it would include flagpoles, streetlights, or as part of a building, something to that effect. And then the baseline definition of camouflage is anything that doesn't look like a cell tower. So this gives the town some flexibility in terms of making those determinations. It gives the town some power and authority, but most importantly, it gives a framework for people or companies that come to the town asking to cite these things within your limits. It gives you some framework to require applications, to have standards, to be able to deny them to the extent you can. And there's some further concerns about co-location. So once one goes in, being able to regulate what gets tacked onto the side of it. And you can deny those as well if they would defeat the camouflage elements. So this is the idea behind the ordinance, is to give you some authority, some power to, to regulate these sorts of applications that come forward in the future. And they are coming. They've already come, a couple of examples have already arrived, but you can expect more of them as, as things progress and as these things get smaller and smaller.
To expand on what the town attorney is indicating, the town has been approached by four different providers, one of which we've been doing a little more research and working with, which is a pioneer in a stealth or stealth style, which would be more of a streetlight pole, flagpole style. We have two that are frankly the kind that we really don't want. They're going to go, their approach is to glob onto the existing power poles and streetlights and put those hanging three-foot type boxes with the, so Sandra, Mike, and I spent some time realizing that we needed to get in front of this because we had nothing, and at some point, we were going to be faced with. And we also have a public service need. We have increased pressure in the community. We're all using multiple devices. Our own field crews, for example, we're looking at deploying. So it's something we wanted to get in front of, and we really felt that going with the stealth or the camouflage was appropriate for the community and was something that we could defend. And like I say, we have, I have one firm that has been really, really pushy, and the only good news is that they don't follow through very well. But we have, like I say, four, four firms that have been doing a level of diligence about wanting to move forward. So this will allow us to have a structure in place to respond. And like I say, we have been working with one, and that particular vendor or partner uses a technology that would be accepted under, or are consistent with this ordinance.
Okay, thanks. Questions of the staff report? Councilmember Doran Becker?
It's, it just, I read 26 pages that you'd written. I just wondered if it took 26 pages to say that we're really worried, you know, what we really are worried about are the aesthetics.
The short answer is yes, and since I, I get from this that brevity is important. And just to elaborate a little bit, part of that is because of the federal regulations, because they have different rules for new facilities, substantial changes to existing facilities, minor change, you know, they break it down in such a way and limit our ability to regulate in such a way that we need to, we need to address each one separately to the maximum we can.
I think you did an outstanding job.
This one is actually simpler than most.
If you want, I will just echo that. The first draft came out, and my initial reaction was less. So he can actually match me in writing, so I can.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions? Councilmember Mueller?
Just generally, so it doesn't have an ordinance number, so right now you're just asking for if we have any.
It's an introduction.
Right, so you just want to know if we've got, well, we can't even introduce it without a number. So you're asking us to provide any comments, and then you're going to come back, and we're going to introduce it later? Is that the plan?
It should have a number.
All right, all right, that.
Our attachment has X's at the top of the order.
All right, so this is.
It is ordinance for Resolution 15441, adding section 13.150.010.
Now, what's the ordinance number, 15-451?
441.
441, okay, that's, that makes sense.
It looks to be an error in the, in the attachment.
Okay. So this is, will be our first reading tonight.
Yes.
But we'll probably want to waive the reading, I would imagine.
Well, the idea being to get this thing in place as soon as possible.
You do have plenty of time tonight if you do want to read it.
Thanks for that.
I do have questions.
I already read.
Are you finished with your question?
That was my only question.
So two questions I have. As I scanned the 26 pages, I didn't see answers to these two, but I may have missed it. Revenue opportunities, do we, we don't address that here? It would be with the individual contracts?
That is correct, because the reason this is a regulatory, this is a, this covers the design guidelines and citing. Anybody that wants to cite on our property has to enter into an agreement that we would bring back to you, and that would be when we would address revenue. If it's approved on private property, then that revenue structure is between the private parties, and the town does not have a.
Right.
Right.
So what, sorry.
Well, yeah, just to clarify, this is aimed, well, it's aimed at all new facilities. It would apply also if we wanted it to, to our own property. But this is really aimed at someone approaching an existing private property owner and saying, hey, can we put a cute little bell tower up on the top of your building and locate a cell tower inside of it, or in the eaves of your building, wherever it is. The nightmare scenario is, can we just put a big steel structure on the corner of your lot, you know? And we don't, and the town doesn't have a permit process for that particular type of structure. That, that's what this is aimed at, really.
So similarly, then, multiple carriers on the same facility isn't addressed here? This is aesthetics?
Yeah, so this would apply to any structure, the purpose of which is to hold a wireless telecommunications facility, which could include cell phones, Wi-Fi, a number telecommunications facility, which could include cell phones, Wi-Fi, a number of different things that fall within an FCC definition of what that is. So, yeah, it would apply equally to if Verizon wanted to put its own tower on a particular lot in town, or to a company that put up a tower and then said, we can locate five companies, come one, come all. It would apply equally to both.
And height limit, do we need to address that specifically?
I, you, you can, but I think what this says, if I remember correctly, is that it allows your other building height requirements and code requirements that apply to structures to apply equally to these, these things, so.
That's totally sufficient in my mind.
But you could, if you wanted, I suppose, put in special rules, just for these.
No, but I, I think, I like the fact that you leave it up to the other ordinances, in case those ordinance, ordinances are adjusted, that we would automatically be adjusting this ordinance by that.
And I think, you know, you want, with the idea of it being concealed, we may want some flexibility, because as Michael alluded to, in some cases, they may be able to design something that's installed in the bell tower. We actually might think that's rather appropriate. In some cases, it may be something that looks like a flagpole, and a flagpole could very well be 50 feet tall. So I don't know that we want a preordained, because if we put a 50-foot height limit in, thinking flagpole, and somebody else thinks something else, then we've got to argue with them. I think this will give us...
No, I agree.
This will give us a lot more latitude to deal with the applicant when they come in.
A fake palm tree, too, could be.
Right.
And typically, we're governed, Sandra, help me wrong here, but we're typically governed by about a two-story height limit, or about 30 feet.
30 feet maximum.
So it's going to give us some flexibility.
Any further questions? Yes, Councilmember Dornbecker?
Just in speaking about a fake, phony palm tree, I thought I read in there that we, we were saying it cannot be a tree.
Yeah, that may be a bad example. I don't think we do allow the trees, but the flagpole is a better example, for sure.
Okay. Thank you. Because I, I, we don't want phony trees.
Right.
Or anything that looks fake.
Right.
Okay. Any of you members of the public like to comment on this? No? Is there action to be had to introduce and waive the reading of this ordinance?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Was there anything further?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, go ahead.
Just a quick question. Does, did you look, does the county have an ordinance?
Napa? I don't know.
Okay. Just wondering if we're the first.
What I also want to clarify also is, there's a newer phenomenon, which is the infill cell towers. So we're really trying to do, ours is a comprehensive one, when we have nothing in place, so it covers what would be a, a larger initial antenna structure. Because I have to admit, it was somewhat surprising to me that we did not have any cell towers mounted on any town facilities. That was just an, an interesting observation. And it might have more to do with our topography. But the new technology is moving in with smaller infill, and we're really trying to prevent the overly urban-type looking stuff just getting glommed onto our stuff.
Well, we also have to be careful of what accessory structures are necessary, because I know I dealt with that with the Napa Expo Board. We allowed a tower that looks like a fake tree in a grove of other trees, and they had a fairly substantial footprint at the base for power generation and everything else.
And you will see that there's guidelines in there on addressing exactly that, and the fact that they need to use.
I'll make a motion. Is it like a motion?
Any further discussion? No? Councilmember Mueller?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 15-441, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Yountville, adopting section 13 dot 150 dot 010 of the Yountville Municipal Code, related to wireless telecommunications facilities, and waive the reading.
I'll second.
Councilmember Dornbecker seconded, even though she did do the reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you for being proactive with, with this language. I would just encourage, Councilmember Mueller had a good point, to see if any of our neighboring jurisdictions have language that we might compare, in case there's any language in there that we might want fine applicable.
Sure.
And if not, we can set the standard.
I'll follow up.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move ahead to staff informational reports. Let's start with Hopper Creek Flood Control Project update.
Okay. We have a slide.
We have some photos.
We do. Photos. That should be... Yeah. That's it. Just do a slide show. So the Hopper Creek Drainage and Flood Control Project is moving right along. I think, I think we've paid out a million and a half dollars so far, out of our two and a half million dollars. And the, in general, the Department of, last month, the Department of Fish and Wildlife extended the, extended the Inn Creek work moratorium to the 31st of October, with weekly extensions for any, any additional work. Right now, there's just minor work going on in the Velagio Channel. The rest of, the rest of the work is pretty much done on the Inn Creek portion of the, the project. There is, there's still some forms on a, on a concrete structure in Beer, at the outlet in Beer Ditch, but that's, that's minor work. Hop 10, the, the area at the French Laundry Gardens, the, that, that area is complete. The contractor constructed new bank profiles and used the vegetated soil lifts. They're, they look like terraces, small terraces. And they put a, they put a seed mixture in the, in the soil, and they wrap it with a, a jute mat, and stick some willow sticks in the middle of it, and when you water it, and it starts to grow. And we, we noticed, we were out today, and you can see that it's already starting to sprout and grow green stuff. And the willow, the willows are growing, too. The Velagio Channel is the same, the work continues in that channel. That's the second photograph up there. There's, there's a little bit more work that the, the contractor is doing towards the south, south end of the, the channel right there, but the portion of the channel that's completed is also sprouting growth. And that's all being irrigated, because we haven't had any rain until yesterday. It's, that's all being, those two spots are being irrigated. Hop 7, the Oak Circle, Heather Street, the, those detention systems are complete, except for their revegetation. The, the hydro seeding and the landscaping around those areas are complete. And as you can see from the picture, it did its job yesterday. And it actually, the first detention basin actually filled up and spilled over to the second detention basin. And we noticed the, the high water mark was about a, this morning, was about a foot above the water right now, so it is percolating, the way it's supposed to be percolating. The Oaks, Oak Circle, the sidewalks are being prepared for final construction. The Fennel Road Project, the two main concrete structures are complete, except for the forms coming off of the, the structure down at the outlet of Beer Ditch. The contractor's working on the new sewer connections right now, and, and the new sewer line that, that's being relocated. PG&E is scheduled to move their high-power lines in early December. Argonaut's going to continue to complete sections of the Fennel Road project, portion throughout the, throughout, throughout November and December.
One last thing to conclude on this is, I presented a fairly detailed report and overview last week to the Measure A Oversight Committee, and, which is responsible for reviewing. So we provided a very detailed report on the expenditure, the history of the project, and when, where we were at with that, and only had minor questions, and was out of there in almost as amount of time that this council meeting should last.
Don't say, don't say it.
So anyway, that's, that part's going through, and I think they appreciated the level of depth, and we also showed them some of the historical flooding that, that this particular project is attempting to minimize. The other thing, I will, Debbie mentioned the landscaping along the Oak Circle. This is an area where we're going to continue with some native, and including some oaks and some riparian, because it does fit that structure. So I know there's some, some thoughts on that, and, and we're working with a, and most likely a, a local nursery out of Napa that actually specializes in local natives of a decent size. So we should be moving forward with that re-landscaping. So you will see that it will not stay looking like in, in Earth, and we were hoping that the sidewalks would get done, so that we can go in and do that. But that'll be on both the north and the south side there of, of Heather, along that approach.
Well, and we're using the same landscape architect for the Oak Circle Park project as for across the street, so they, it's all tied together.
Great. Councilmember Mueller?
So on the Fennel, I guess you call it Fennel 7, or Hopper 7, or whatever. So when, Hopper 5? When, Hopper 5, now I know the code word. So when are sidewalks and streetlights going in? Is that going to be this year?
Yes. The short answer is, that project moves fairly quickly. The, the first part of that is the tear-up of the street, and Debbie mentioned that we just, we had a, a very productive meeting today with PG&E on coordination, and we're anticipating their work will occur in early December, so we'll be following up with the complete putting the culverts and the drains in. And then the finished work will include the repaving of the street, the sidewalks, and the streetlights. So we're probably looking at, realistically, that would be occurring in January.
Okay.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting. So I guess you got all the mosquito fish out of the Velagio Channel.
They did.
Where do they go?
They took them to the Napa River.
Oh, okay.
And re, repopulated the Napa River.
All right. Just curious.
Thanks.
Other questions from the council? Anyone from the public, including our PG&E representative that's in the audience, have anything to add?
Hello.
Yes, please. You've come all this way, Mark.
In the future, I'll be able to ride my bicycle.
There you go.
I'm looking forward to that. So I just briefly say, and I'm here to answer any questions, though I think, you know, we had a meeting today. Our team was here to, I think reaffirm the, the working relationship and the commitment to, to finish, as Town Manager Rogers just mentioned, perhaps even possible earlier than, than the date we talked about today.
I like better news than I have.
So they are really committed, they're working, working very hard and pulling together as, as much of the resources to get it done. So I, I don't see any reason why we, why we won't. And it's been good working, he's not here now, but it's been good working with Joe and the other members of the team. So it's a big project, and we're committed to helping out. I don't know if you have questions.
I'll just, I'll just state, I know, I've, I've mentioned on numerous occasions to our staff, a frustration that I've had, since it's a regular back and forth from my residents, and I know Councilmember Mueller lives right around the corner as well, seeing extended periods of, of non-action. And there may be very valid reasons for that, but when you're blocked from your normal, you know, getting to and from your house, and the sidewalks are closed, and you see roads torn up for days or weeks with no action, it, it's hard to understand why that is. And so as long as there's constant communication or timely communication with our staff, so we can let our residents know why that might be the case. So I, it's a huge project, and it's a major thoroughfare, and so it's going to affect more than Fennel and Vista, since a lot of folks take Fennel to get out of town, and they can't do that right now, so.
So it sounds like what may not be happening as well as we typically do. In, in these projects, we will, depending on whether it's an electric project or a gas project, and in this case, it's kind of a little bit of both. Let me double-check on our customer outreach communications, folks and their involvement, and, and what they have been saying, or what they can improve on saying, and how they're communicating with the, with the crews. I...
That would be, that would be very helpful. I think even if you can provide us a link on, that we can post on our website to that information on your website, that would be helpful.
I don't, don't know that we'll have real-time information.
No, I understood, but the one vault project that's over in the Vista neighborhood that sat idle for two months now, which is without explanation, as far as I know, that's an example.
I will point out, we had that conversation as well today, and Mark and his team are trying to get us a more up-to-date answer on the status of that particular project, because that project is not actually tied to the one we're currently talking about. Unfortunately, in the proximity that they are, a whole lot of people mix the two.
Yeah, the residents don't make the separation.
And they don't. And people going through.
Understandably.
But anyway.
Well, let me speak to that really quickly, too. So I'll just say that, that in the last year, I think we just celebrated our one year working together. We have, and I'm looking forward to maybe introducing him to you. His name is Dave Canny. He is our Division Leadership Team Manager for the North Bay, which is basically Marin, Napa Counties, and then a piece of Vallejo, Bonisha. But Dave's, Dave's role is to sort of bring the many lines of business of PG&E together. We meet twice a month, and I will raise this issue with him directly, and then, and we'll, we'll figure that out and talk through it. But we do have those pockets where the left hand isn't necessarily, I think in this particular case, there was an assumption that that was a part of this project, and people said, yes, we're working on it, we'll get that done. And then there was a realization that...
As long as we can have a reliable line of communication that can provide accurate information, that would be helpful.
Please call, I mean, so I speak, I talk regularly with Debbie, I talk with Steve, Joe, but I hope if you, if you don't have my contact information, I will resend it. But at any time those issues come up, they shouldn't, we should be taking care of all that, so that you can do your business. But if you have complaints or concerns from neighbors, I really invite you to, to text, call, email me directly, and then I can, I can look into those, especially, especially my role with you as the elected officials. I'm here to support you, Town Manager and Public Works. But if you contact me with those specific instances, perhaps you have, and if I didn't follow up, then I apologize.
No, you have, and you've been a good partner in following up, and it's appreciated, and you'll, you'll hear from us if we need to.
Yeah, please do. It's helpful. If I can while I'm up here, are there any other questions?
Any other questions specific to this project?
I just have one thing before you say that. Mark, I do want to point out, Mark's talked about some initiatives, and one of the most positive things is that we have more ongoing communications. And as a result, I think the lines of communication between the town and PG, and at some of the other levels, is really improving, because we're able to start, one, Mark's asking, we're providing information, so we're able to start getting them information about projects two, three years out, which will allow for better overall coordination for both entities. So I do want to, I do want to say, it's a noticeable improvement on our behalf, and even when there's some dicier conversations, the overall outcomes are still generally progressing on a, a much more informed and appropriate manner. So I do want to, you know, we often comment when things aren't going so well, and I think it's also important to acknowledge when there's a process change that I do think is having some, some real positive, and will continue to produce even more positive results down the road.
And, yeah, let me follow up on that, too. I mean, the, the communication with the Public Works Department, with the Town Manager, with Debbie, you know, started pretty far, pretty far back, and that was really a positive step in the right direction. I've, I've even learned some things about maybe responding back sooner, and, and it's, I don't, you know, want you to think that this is a learning process for PG&E. It's, it's a learning process for me, as being a, still relatively new to the, to the Government Relations Team. But following up with our service planning team and making sure that we have all of the things in order that we need to, to keep the projects going, I think, like Steve said, with other projects that will come up, we'll be able to respond more quickly, collaborate better, communicate better, get information out to the public better. So it'll improve.
And as we get into the winter months, if we do have the kind of winter that is being forecast, we have some residents that are very directly impacted, certainly Girardi Place. Being able to get in and out of their own homes is a concern, residents right across the street. So if there are weather delays or, or any other impacts, the more proactive you can be to get us information, that's great. You'll certainly be hearing from us if we hear concerns also.
I think... I think, maybe pointing out the obvious, yeah, I, I'm nearby, but I cover a, a large area of about 18 different jurisdictions, maybe about 108 different council members, county supervisors, so I'm trying to be everywhere as, as much as I can. So, if you see something, anyone, if your residents are communicating to you that there's an issue or a problem, if you, as fast as we can get that information directly to me, I will probably not resolve the issue myself, but I will reach out to the people in PG, inform them, and we'll see if we can get a fast response.
And you've been doing a great job supporting us in that effort, as recently as yesterday. So, it's appreciated.
Thank you. And while you're talking about the storms, I, I did provide some information that I would encourage your, anyone who may be watching at home or listening, maybe, your website, there are two key links as we head in towards the storm season, taking that segue on the storms, and yesterday's tremendous lightning and, and rain. Those two portals to outage information will be very helpful to people to getting that information, perhaps even faster than I'll be able to, to get it to you and others. So, I would encourage folks to go highlight or bookmark those links, and even on their phone, they say, "Well, my computer's out at home, the power's out, how am I going to get it?" But even, even the telephones these days are pretty accessible.
And during the outage, there were two residents, neighbors of mine, that said they were immediately texted with information, so...
Well, and those are folks who, those are folks who've signed up for, on the MyEnergy. So, I sent that link as well, and, and if you sign up, yeah, my, my power was out. And so, you get the email, the text, however you want to set it up, but it's, it's almost immediate with a smart meter. As soon as the power's lost, we know it, and that address gets a notification.
Just for people that may want to sign up, just make sure you have your account number handy, that, that took a while.
That is, yeah, I know, I've been through that.
It's not at the top of the memory.
If I could briefly, I wanted to make a, a quick comment about Samantha Hall and then the Parks and Recreation Group. I should have stood up...
It's a good segue, because I was about to ask her to give us an update on our...
Didn't pay him or anything.
Yeah, no, not at all. Go ahead.
I just want, I should have stood up during public comment. If you want, I could hold my comments, but I just, I wanted to say, our family comes and has been coming to Yountville. I might get in trouble from my Napa friends for saying this, but we come to the Yountville Pool every year for the last five years, I don't know how long it's been. And my daughters learned to swim in the Yountville Pool. Now they're 11 and eight, and, and we come every year, we get a family membership, and it's probably one of the things that we look forward to doing the most. The staff there are professional, the place is always extremely clean. There's only been one or two kind of incidents that needed to be controlled, and I think the staff came out and managed it well. So, the, the team that you put together there is something I used to tell people a lot about, and now I like it so much, I kind of want to keep it to myself. But I really do think they do an excellent job, and it's, it's a treasure for us, so don't stop it. You can increase my fee by a dollar or two if you want, but make sure it's open.
Sounds good.
We want to keep coming.
Cost recovery.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. It does lead me into, I was going to ask Samantha to, are, are there any other questions about the, the update? Thank you, Debbie. I did want to have Samantha give us an update on the openings on our Park and Recreation Commission.
Yes, thank you. So, we are currently recruiting for three seats on the Parks Recreation Advisory Commission, two regular seats and one voting high school member seat, and the applications are available on our website now. And it's a very exciting time, if you're interested in joining the commission, as we're heading into the five-year strategic planning process for the department, the commission's going to be integral in that process and very involved, and able to get out there in the community and help us gather information. So, we really encourage applicants, so that you have a hard decision to make. It's always nice to have more applicants than seats, so that we can mix things up. So, I encourage people to go online and take a look at that, and I'm always available to answer questions or meet with people who are interested in learning more. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, that's it for our staff info reports, I believe. I'm going to move ahead to our council meeting reports. Two very brief ones from me today, Napa County Flood Control. We received a clean 2014-15 financial audit, which is always a good thing. Also, we received a report on the cost estimates and revenues for the duration of the flood control budget through 2018. And just looking at the spreadsheet, it looks very encouraging, $24 million expected to be left over. However, there's a very strong concern that the government will no longer support the project, and some of that money may dissipate before 2018, and it also is required for indefinite maintenance. So, that number sounds big, but it's not, it's supposed to, to last a very, very long time, so hopefully it will. That was that, that meeting today. Also, NCTPA is changing its name, and at the end of a long, and I think fairly successful rebranding effort, it will now be known as the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, NVTA. It already is the NVTA in a tax collection component, but the board agreed that we should rebrand ourselves to be NVTA. Little more intuitive, being a transportation agency, there'll be entirely new branding of the, the transit system vehicles, and with that, some other freshening and updating of, of the agency as a whole, and better public outreach. Those are my two meetings. Any other reports or announcements from the council? I did just want to remind folks, because there's often a very heavy volunteer effort from Yountville residents, the Napa Valley Film Festival is starting up next week. The very, the first day of activities starts at the Lincoln Theater on Tuesday, and Tuesday evening, there is a screening at the Cameo Cinema in St. Helena, and then it officially kicks off on Wednesday through next, a week from Sunday. So, you'll see a lot of activity around the valley.
You want to mention the veterans?
Yes, sure. The annual Chamber of Commerce Celebrity Chef Luncheon at the Veterans Home happens tomorrow. There'll be two seedings, as usual, half a dozen of our star local chefs, and an abundance this year, volunteers will be there. I think many of us in this room will be there volunteering. So, and with that background music that we have, yeah, that's always a wonderful, a very feel-good volunteer effort, and we appreciate the chamber and all of our chefs and their staffs that are going to support the day, where we get to recognize the service our veterans have given us, a week before the official Veterans Day next week. Any other announcements from council? Seeing no other business for this evening, I see we do not have a closed session. It must be somebody's birthday to not have a closed session. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment to our next regular meeting, which is Tuesday, November 17th. It's 6:00 PM.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and a very happy 7:00 PM good night.